Hi, everyone. I think we're going to get things started. Wanted to say welcome and introduce myself. I'm Jamie Reinville. I'm the co-director for Family Vermont Family Network. Like to let you all know that we are recording this meeting. And for your privacy, we've asked that you turn off your cameras. And if you could please place yourself on mute if you're not already on mute, and this will really help with the background. We do have quite a few people on today, so if you could kindly mute yourselves, it'd be appreciated. If you do have a question or a comment, please feel free to use the chat button. For most people, it's going to be in the bottom of your screen. We have extended this meeting by 30 minutes, so we have until about 3:30 to go through the information and to answer your questions. But if you do need to hop off at any point, please feel free to do so. We're going to be saving this recording to the Vermont Family Network website, as well as sharing the recording with all of our partners, so that the information will get out to everyone. And so I'm going to pass things over to Kirsten Murphy.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. It is, it's really exciting to see so many people interested in getting this information today. I'm Kristen Murphy. I'm the executive director of your state's Developmental Disabilities Council. And I just, the DD Council, along with the fine folks at Family Network and the folks at the Division of Developmental Services are co-sponsoring this event to give you as much information and answer as many questions as possible. I just want to introduce a few people. Pam McCarthy is here with us. Pam is the president and chief executive officer for Family Network. Tammy Carroll is a parent and Tammy's my advertisement for why it's great to invest in leadership training, because you never know when it's going to pay off. Along with a whole coast of parents, Tammy's been doing a great job of yielding questions and advocating with legislators and the state to make this temporary financial relief available. Selena Hickman is here. Selena is the director of the Vermont Developmental Disability, is the director of the Developmental Disability Services Division. And poor Selena has kind of had trial by fire. She's only been in the job a couple of months, so. And then we have Claire McFadden, who will be one of our sort of content experts here. There's the former director of the Developmental Disability Services Division. And she is now the director of Payment Reform for the Department of Disabilities, Aging, and Independent Living. My job will be to monitor the chat box while the presentation is rolling. And as time permits, there's a lot of questions that that will be answered while the presentation is going on. The questions in advance to the state. But if people have questions as the presentation is going, I will monitor those questions and then, as time permits, at the end, roughly in order and just filter them if they've already been answered. With that, I will bring it over to Selena Hickman.
Everybody, I think Jamie's working hard to make sure that everyone's on mute, but we're definitely hearing some background noise. I appreciate everyone muting themselves, so we have a good recording.
Whoever's the host of this meeting has the power to mute everyone.
Yes, Jamie is very powerful.
I am working on that.
Excellent. So just a huge thank you again to everyone who's worked so hard to bring us here together to Vermont Family Network for hosting and for Kirsten for moderating. We've just been moving so quickly at quite unprecedented pace. And so I think I should just start out by saying, you know, we're trying not to make perfection the enemy of the good. We're here to share with you what we know, what we've been working on. Your questions are going to help us make sure that we get this right, but we'll take a little time to go through today what we know and answer the questions that we've already received from quite a few people. And then we'll have some time at the end for the live chat. So we're, if you're on this call, hopefully it's because you want to hear information and have questions answered about a new policy to provide emergency support options to family caregivers through the Developmental Disability Service Division. We know some folks might not know if their services are coming through developmental services, so we'll talk a little bit about that, too, when we get to the Q and A in terms of how you know. But there was some confusion before this town hall. This is not about guidance for shared living providers. We are working with designated and specialized service agencies on that policy. But if you're on the call and that's what you're hoping to hear, that's actually not what this town hall meeting is about today. So I apologize if there was confusion about that. So relating to emergency support options to family caregivers through developmental services, our division has worked incredibly quickly to make emergency supports available to family caregivers. And there's, there are a few things that have combined to make this make this necessary. Obviously, the COVID-19 state of emergency is unlike anything that we've had to deal with before and has required us to make rapid changes to policies that have been in place for decades. We've also been hearing from families urgent requests for assistance for folks who are struggling without normal supports. And then we also have the, this availability of short-term emergency waivers to change normal Medicaid rules. Finally, I have to recognize that this policy area is one that has a long history and that this is a temporary policy change that is in effect only during the COVID-19 state of emergency. Because things are going so rapidly and because we needed to provide support as quickly as possible, I should acknowledge that unfortunately, the state of emergency did not support a normal stakeholder engagement process. So to come up with these options, the Division of Developmental Services used the framework of our existing programming and a few federal, and the new federal waivers to develop and implement these payment options as quickly as possible. I think the last thing I should acknowledge while I'm putting it all out there is that the recognition that in our urgency to make these options available, we didn't have time to pre-plan with agencies on implementation. So some of you may have been reaching out to your agencies and service coordinators already, and they don't yet have the information from the state to be able to help you. And it's our top priority after this town hall today to make sure that agencies have everything they need to support these new emergency options for family caregivers. So those are just a few things. I want to make sure everybody has this context as we go into this. It's not quite perfect, but we're definitely doing our best and will continue to move forward on these next steps to make sure everything is implemented as quickly as possible. Next slide, please.
And this is Kristen just jumping in to ask, there's been a request that we, the presenter, speak a little louder if they can.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You might have to see my face a little larger as I get closer to my microphone. So sorry about that, too. And then I also, I should pause just a moment. I believe our commissioner at Dale, Monica Hutt, is on the line. Monica, is there any, are there any comments that you would like to make about this emergency support and what we're doing here before we move on?
Thanks, Selena. I don't want to take up a lot of time because I think we've got material to get through. And I think Selena gave you all of the caveats for why this isn't perfect. But I want to just express my gratitude, not only to the family members that have reached out to ask us questions and to poke and prod and make sure that we were giving this as much thought as we could, but also to the DBSD staff because they have worked incredibly hard for the last month and a half on on so many aspects of keeping Vermont moving forward in developmental services through this crisis. This is certainly one piece of it, but there are many other pieces. So my gratitude to Selena and her team, who have just been extraordinary, considering that we're scattered to the four winds and trying to do our work over, over video and audio and phone. And also, again, my gratitude to all the families out there that have stepped in so, in such an extraordinary way to do what they always do, which is to support their kids. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Monica. So I'll keep us moving through because I think everybody really wants to get their questions answered. And I'm also going to try to speak a little louder. So first of all, who's the emergency support for? The emergency support is for family caregivers of people who receive developmental disability services through either designated agencies, specialized services agencies, and also for folks who sell for family managed services with transition two. Next slide, please. So what we're going to talk about today are four different options for emergency support for family caregivers. The first option is related to Developmental Disabilities Home and Community-Based Services, the acronym DDHCBS, and a lot of you may refer to this as the DD waiver or a waiver. And the ability to convert family managed funds from that waiver. The second is also related to people who receive DDHCBS or the waiver and a new flexible COVID-19 crisis stipend. The third option we're going to talk about are, is an increase to an existing family managed respite funds. And the fourth option is the priority use of one-time funds. So I, as I think Kirsten mentioned, we have Claire McFadden, our former director, with us, who's really a subject matter expert, and so she's going to be the one to walk you through the content of each of these four options. Claire, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay. Next slide, please. Good afternoon, everybody. So we're going to talk about the four options. And the first option is the conversion of family managed funds. And this is for people who currently have home and community-based services funding. Next slide, please. So what is it? So this is a payment and it's going to be for up to $5,000 based on what a individual has left over in their DD Home and Community-Based Services or waiver package from now until the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th of 2020. So if there are any unused funds, either in respite or any other funds that you manage, and again, these would be the funds that you hire workers for and pay them through ERIS. And we're going to allow the conversion of those funds into what we're calling a difficulty-of-care payment to parents. And again, so it's up to $5,000, but it's, and it's up to, because you may not have that much left over in your budget. But what you do have left over, you can convert. And the purpose is to provide you some support while workers are not coming into your home because of the COVID emergency. So who can get it? It has to be a person. It's the family of a person who has a DD Home and Community-Based Services funding package. Parts of the budget have to be managed by the family. And the parents or other unpaid family caregivers, we realize that there are other types of family caregivers who are providing full-time care to individuals with developmental disabilities that aren't parents, but those family caregivers would also be able to get this payment. But essentially, the person is living with you or the unpaid family caregiver full-time, and there are leftover funds available. Next slide. So again, it's a, it's going to be a one-time payment. It's up to $5,000. And it's dependent on how much unspent money there is available. And the payment is going to be for the funds that are available from April 1st through the end of the year, which is our, that's our fiscal year, the state, June 30th, 2020. And how would you get the funding? You would need to contact your service coordinator or your transition to advisor to find out if this payment option is available to you. So just another comment about these conversion funds. So we don't know when the state of emergency is going to end. It could end prior to June 30th, and you might be able to then hire, you know, rehire your workers. So you'll want to make a judgment about whether you want to take all of your unused funds from now until the end of the fiscal year, or whether you want to reserve some to rehire workers. Or maybe you have a work, you know, some workers who you're able to pay, but then there's still some unspent funds. You'll have to take that into consideration as well in terms of how much money you want to convert. So as I go through these slides, you'll want to put, if you, if you're, if you have questions related to what I'm talking about, just please go ahead and type them into the chat box. And then when we get through all the slides, we will go back and answer your questions. Okay? Next slide, please. Okay. This is option number two. This is the flexible COVID-19 crisis statement. And again, this is for people who have the DD Home and Community-Based Services packages of support. Next slide, please. So this pot of money is for those people who have less than $2,000 available to be converted under option one. So sometimes people spend all of their money prior to the end of the year. Respite is used, you know, essentially when people need it. So some people could be out of money in their budget for respite or other types of services that they manage. So this option is if you're out of that money. Or it could be that you have, you actually don't have a budget. That's where you hire workers through ERIS. Maybe you're a family who has all the services that are delivered directly by an agency. If that's the case, you would be eligible to get this up to $2,000 amount as well. So who can get the funding? Funding are parents or other family caregivers and for either minor or adult children. You're providing full-time care at home. And you can't get access to the services you typically get through your home and community-based package of service. And you're providing that care yourself now. So those are the folks that are eligible for that. In some cases, you know, maybe their, your child or adult child was living outside the home in a shared living provider arrangement or a group home, and due to the emergency, they've moved back home. You would be eligible for this option as well. And again, how much money is available? It would be up to $2,000, which would be a total between options one and two. So let me explain that a little bit. Some people may be in a situation where they've spent most of their money and they don't have $2,000 left of unspent funds. In those situations, what we would be asking is you to convert the balance of your unused funds, if they're not going to be needed between now and the end of the fiscal year, or you can't access them. And then the balance of the money up to $2,000 would come from this separate pot of money that the agencies are going to be cutting checks to families for. So again, between the two options, one and two, the total payment would be $2,000. Next slide, please. So again, the, the date when this money is available is April 1st through June 30th this year. And you will need to contact your service coordinator or your transition to advisor to find out if this payment option is available to you. In some certain circumstances, there may be situations where individuals' needs exceed the $2,000 stipend. And if there is a significant need for additional assistance, you can work with your agency and the agency can make a request to the department for additional funding. Next slide, please. This is option three. It's an increase to the family managed respite funds that are available to, this is for people who have family managed respite or who would be eligible for family managed respite. And this is for people who do not have DD Home and Community-Based Services. Next slide, please. So family managed respite is a program for families of children and youth with developmental disabilities or with mental health conditions or co-occurring disabilities. And they don't get home community-based services funding. So this is the only one that actually applies both to children with developmental disabilities and children with mental health concerns. And this is a collaborative program across our department and the Department of Mental Health. This is available for children and youth up to age 21. And it's for parents who have the full-time caregiving responsibility for their children. In this situation, the, the current family managed respite guidelines will apply in terms of who's eligible for this service. Next slide, please. So if you are a family that's not already receiving family managed respite, the amount of money that you would be eligible to receive is outlined in the family managed respite guidelines. There are basically, the agencies do an assessment about what the need is and determine an amount of funding that's available to families. And so new families can apply for family managed respite under this new funding. And then there are families who are already have, they've already been authorized to get family managed respite. And they can get up to 25% more dollars to purchase respite and hire respite workers, essentially, if they've already used up their current allocations. So in the current family managed respite guidelines, the, the amount of funds that are authorized for families to hire respite workers, the cap is $6,000. But it, it ranges depending on the needs of the specific family, but 6,000 is the highest level. So if somebody was already getting $6,000 and they had an additional need due to the COVID emergency, they could get an additional 25% on top of that. But it'll be 25% more of whatever the agency had determined your allocation should be for this year. So parents and caregivers would go to their designated agencies to apply for these funds. These funds are not available through the specialized services agencies. They are just available through designated agencies, the 10 agencies around the state and where you live. Okay, next slide, please. So the fourth and final option is actually not something that's new, but we are emphasizing some flexible use of what we call one-time funds. And these, again, are not the DD Home and Community-Based Services, but there are some funds that the state makes available to the provider agencies to meet essentially the crisis needs of people who have developmental disabilities. Next slide, please. So what we're emphasizing is that some of these one-time funds that are given to the provider agencies to meet the needs of people with developmental disabilities, that they be prioritized for use as flexible family funding. Flexible family funding is another program that our department funds. And flexible family funding is available to both children and adults who live at home with their families and they have a developmental disability. And it's an amount up to $1,000 in any given year. And it's based on a sliding fee scale, depending on family size and income. So essentially, we're asking that the agencies with the one-time funds that have been given to them prioritize funding, some additional flexible family funding for additional families. And then in addition to that, can you just go back one second? In addition to that, the one-time funds can be used for short-term needs that address personal health, safety, public safety, or short-term crisis needs. So agencies can use that funding for people who are currently enrolled in a program, or it could be new people who aren't currently enrolled in a program. It's just that anybody who has a developmental disability can request assistance from their designated agency for these one-time funds. And it's also, it's also through specialized services agencies. Okay, next slide. So the amount of funding, it's based on the specific needs of the person. And if it's going to be used for flexible family funding, it has to meet the, the guidelines in flexible family funding that I was referring to. And if it's other types of crisis supports through one-time funding, there's specific guidance. And that guidance is out, the one-time funding guidance is outlined in the system of care plan. And the flexible family funding, there's guidance for that as well. And at the end of this PowerPoint, there are links to those documents, so you can see what types of parameters are used for making decisions about that. So again, if you are in services already, you would contact your service coordinator to find out if this payment option is available to you. If you're new, you can just contact the intake person at, at one of our designated or specialized services agencies. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, now we're going to move into the question and answer section of this presentation. So what I'm going to do first is review some of the questions that were sent in ahead of time. Then we will have time for people to ask additional questions, and you'll do that by typing in your questions into the chat box. I see there's already a number of questions. I see there's already a number of questions posed there. And we will go through those questions and try to get through as many as we possibly can with the time we have available. We will then create a document that will have all the answers to the questions that were, both the ones that were sent in ahead of time and anything that was posed today. Or if anybody has follow-up questions, they can be sent to, you can send them to me. And we will create a document with the answers to all the questions and the answers. And then that will be posted on the Dale and Vermont Family Network websites. So there are a few questions that we got that we still have to do some research on. And we will get back to you with those. And we will update the question and answer document as soon as we have the answers to those questions. Okay, next slide, please. So here's one of the questions that was sent in. How will families hear this information? So both Vermont Family Network and Dale will post this presentation on their website along with the answers to the questions. We will be asking the agencies to reach out to families that receive services to explain the options. And we had a question about how people who are not English language learners or have other needs for translation could receive this services, receive this information. And agencies are able to access translation services as needed. And then finally, Dare, Dale will share this information through its stakeholder networks. We, we do connect with a variety of stakeholder groups like the DD Council, Vermont Family Network, the State Program Standing Committee, the provider agencies, our partners at the Department of Health, et cetera. And we will make sure that we share all this information with others. Next slide, please. We had a question about what do we need to do and when do we need to do it to receive the stipend? Okay, so again, we're talking about the stipends that are available through converting your unused respite or other funds that was option one and the $2,000 stipend. So again, you will work with your provider agency to which, to determine which option pertains to your specific circumstances. The agencies will provide you assistance with that process in terms of figuring out which option is available to you and then what you need to do to access the service, to access the funding. And essentially, the, these funds are going to be available through the end of June. So families should really get in touch with their agencies no later than early June to make sure there's enough time to process the information, get information out to ARIS for the conversion and then for the payments to be processed. Next slide, please. When will guidance be provided to agencies and ARIS so they can process requests? So again, I know Selena mentioned this at the beginning of the presentation, but we wanted to make sure that families knew that there was some type of support going to be available to them. And so we sent that out ahead of having all the operational details worked out. And so we are going to work very quickly with both our provider agencies and ARIS to get all the procedures and guidance set up as soon as possible. And so that we can start moving forward with processing these requests for support. And so we're anticipating, you know, unless it's, there's unanticipated issues that we should be able to get that, those details worked out, you know, within, within a week or so. So that's, that's, that's our hope and intent. But you know, you can, in the meantime, you can judge providers and to start the discussion. Okay, next slide, please. For the stipend, who is the employer and employee? So this is a little different than the, what families are typically used to. So as, when you have a DD Home and Community Based Services and you're managing some portion of those services, you're used to hiring, you know, the, the family member is typically the employer and they hire employees. In this situation, what we're doing is converting under option number one, we'll be converting money that was available to hire workers into a stipend that's paid to families. And so because of that, it being paid out as a stipend, there is no employee or employer or employee in these scenarios. Also in option two and in option one, these payments that are going to be made to family members are considered tax-free difficulty of care payments. So what that means is when you file your federal taxes, they're not considered income for the purposes of paying your federal taxes. It's a, it's a tax-free difficulty of care payment. Next slide, please. So I know this is a big question that a lot of people have had. And the question is, how do these payments impact a parent's benefits such as unemployment, SSI, fuel assistance, reach-out, food stamps? So unfortunately, Dale is not able to answer that question. Each of these programs have their own rules regarding what is considered income. So what we can say is that we are considering these payments to families tax-free stipends that are difficulty of care payments. And that relates to whether it's considered income for the purposes of filing your federal taxes. But beyond that, each of these types of programs have different rules about what they consider income, and we do not know how they would consider each of these. So we would recommend that families consult these programs for answers. Next slide, please. When will families receive payments? Okay, so for the funds that are under option one, that's where a, a family decides to convert a portion of the funds available that they manage from hiring workers to creating a payment for themselves. So what will need to happen is families have to work with their providers and make a decision about how much funding is going to be converted. That information has to be sent to ARIS regarding the change. And then the family will be able to submit a request for payments and then ARIS will process the payment. So exactly how long all that will take, I don't have an exact answer, but that is the process that you'll be going through. Once we have provided guidance to the providers and to ARIS around how all this is going to work, envisioning that it will not be very long in order to submit the, the request for payments. So then for the $2,000 stipends, and this is option two, and that's when there was no funds available to convert, but there's still a need for some support to the family. This money is going to come from your provider agency. So you will consult with your service coordinator and then you will be making a request to the provider. And then each agency will have their own process in their, in a timeframe for making the payments. But, and I don't, again, I don't know exactly how long that will take, but the intention is to get that money out as soon as possible to families. Next slide, please. This applies to only a few people who have what's called a Unified Service Plan. So the question was, what, what if I have a Unified Service Plan? How, how would that work? So basically, a Unified Service Plan, it's a way of blending different funding streams so that the services are accessed through a single provider. And it, it's essentially the blending of, for, for most of the purposes, it's the blending of children's personal care services and developmental disability home community-based services. And the children's personal care funding is blended into the developmental disabilities home community-based services plan. So the money is transferred into that plan. So once a family has a Unified Service Plan, they would be able to access the options that are described under number one and number two that I've been referring to. So they can either access the conversion or the $2,000. So you would not be able to though, access the flexibilities that were described by the children's services, children's personal care services program and the way that they had set that up for parents to receive payments based on their children's personal care allocations. Next slide, please. So some folks had questions about what program they're in. And I know the, you know, we at the state are very familiar with all the names and the names and the jargon that's used to describe services, but it's not always clear exactly which program you're enrolled in when you're accessing services. So my advice, if you're un, if you're uncertain about what program you're in and then therefore which program, which option you're, you would have access to, my recommendation is that you would contact your case manager or other contact at one of the designated agency or specialized services agencies. And they will be able to tell you if you're, if the, if you're involved in a developmental disability services program currently or whether you would be eligible for one of the four options that have been described. If you're just receiving children's personal care services, those services are administered by the Vermont Department of Health, not by Dale. So we would not be able to assist you with that. You should know whether you're enrolled in children's personal care services because you are getting regular paperwork from that program when they authorize your funding. But if you're not, so I would recommend, take a look at the paperwork that you're getting. It should be coming from the Vermont Department of Health. And, but if not, you can contact them to confirm whether you're enrolled in children's personal care program. Next slide, please. What is the time period for these funds? What if the pandemic lasts longer? So currently, the time period is from April 1st through June 30th of 2020. And the reason for that is because that's the state's fiscal year. That's, that's how we run our budgets from July 1st through June 30th of each year. And the funding that's available and that is the money that's appropriated every year from the legislature to the department and then out to the agencies. So we have to work within our fiscal years each year. And so we do not know what funds exactly will be available starting July 1st. So we've only made this funding available now through the end of this fiscal year. And then we'll reevaluate, if the pandemic lasts longer, we will be taking a look at what funding is available for the next fiscal year. And we'll have to make decisions at that point in time about what might be available. The only caveat that is the one-time funds that I referenced under option four, they are, they do continue to remain available into next fiscal year, so after July 1st. It's basically that they remain available until the agency has given them all out and they can carry over into the next year. So if you are looking for one-time funds past July 1st, they may be available at your provider agency. Next slide, please. We had a question about what about those of us in the midst of a reevaluation or renewal? So in developmental services, we have given agencies some flexibility regarding reassessments and renewals of people's individual service plans. And so there are extensions allowed regarding extending the current plans. So there, there's a little more time available to agencies to renew an, an individual service plan. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is that right now, people who are currently receiving home and community-based services, we are not terminating people during this state of emergency. There's only a few rare circumstances when, when people would get terminated, such as like they moved out of state or they moved into a nursing home or they just decided they didn't want services anymore, those types of situations. But for those people who continue to want to stay enrolled in the program, we are not, we've advised agencies not to terminate people during the state of emergency. Next slide, please. So there were a number of questions that were sent in that we don't yet have all the details worked out. And we're again, working very closely and we're, we're going to quickly work with ARIS and also with the provider agencies to get some of the answers to these questions. But we do not yet have an answer to the questions related to background checks. Some of the questions were, that were sent were, do we need to have a complete ARIS employer, employee packet? Are background checks required to receive a stipend? Would family caregiver background check approvals be treated as retroactive to the date of the federal emergency declaration? And the difference between the way the home and community-based services program and children's personal care were considering the need for background checks? So we are in, having discussions with the children's personal care program. And we're trying to come up with a unified approach to dealing with background checks. And we will have information for you very soon about what, what's going to be required related to background checks or not. And then there was a final question about whether the state will be sending 1099s and making these stipends eventually taxable. And we're pretty sure that the answer to that is that these payments can be considered tax-free difficulty of care payments. But I, we need to get clarification about whether that requires a 1099. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so here's some of the links that I was referring to. Okay, so here's some of the links that I was referring to. There's the family managed respite guidelines, the Vermont flexible family funding guidelines, and the guidelines regarding one-time funding. And next slide, if there is one, or is that the last slide? Okay. That's the last slide. Okay, so that concludes the presentation and the answer to some questions. I see we got lots of questions coming up in the chat box. And so we're going to have Kirsten read the questions in the chat box. And we will try to answer as many as we can with the time that we have remaining. If we don't get to your question, we, we will have a record of all the questions that were sent from this town hall, and we'll include the answers to your questions in the document that we're compiling around all the questions and answers.
So Claire, thank you so much.
It looks like we have about 37 minutes, so we should be able to get through a bunch of questions.
Great. All right, everyone can hear me? Does somebody wave or something? You can hear me, right? Okay, good. So first, I just want to let folks know, we, we don't understand why a weird yellow line is showing up on the slides, but you'll just have to ignore it. We apologize for that. I'm going to take these sort of in the order that they came in, just to try to be as even-handed as possible, with one exception because I want to share a nice shout out from someone, and I'm not going to use anyone's names here so that it's not on the tape. As a parent, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone who has worked so hard to make this happen. I, it will make a huge difference in our lives right now. All right, and I also wanted to focus on one question because it was asked several times. If an individual with a DD waiver who normally lives independently is now staying with a family member full-time due to current conditions pertaining to COVID, could that family member receive funding from options one or two?
So the answer to that would be yes. So if they've been living independently and they went home and the family is now providing support, if there was funds that the, the family was managing, even when the person was living independently, and there's funds that are unspent in that budget and the family is managing those, they could access the up to $5,000 under option one. But if they were not, and it was all agency-managed services, they could access the $2,000 in option two.
Thank you. Several people have asked, do these four options apply to home providers that are not family members? So presumably, people in, who are shared-living providers?
No, the, these four options are specifically for unpaid family caregivers. So parents and perhaps other, you know, primary caregivers that are family members who are providing full-time care in their home. There's a, there is some different relief and assistance that agencies are being provided for the shared-living providers. And that's some guidance that the department is providing to the agencies. So people, if, if, if someone's a shared-living provider, they can contact their agency about that.
Several people have asked about the term service coordinator. Is that the same thing as a case manager?
Yes, it is.
Why is my chat going away? Here we go. Oh, sorry. So I'm afraid my technology is now messing me up a little bit, but all right. Okay. Do I have to fill out an ARIS employee form for myself if I am the employer under the DD Home and Community-Based Services?
So I'm not sure the answer to that one yet. We have to check in with ARIS about exactly what paperwork is going to be needed. I mean, again, it, it's, it's not an employee-employer relationship, but we're not sure exactly what paperwork we're going to be requiring, but so that will be part of the follow-up that we'll provide.
Is option two available for families whose services are totally agency-managed?
Yes.
Somebody writes that currently, my son's services are completely suspended and we have zero respite left. What should I do?
That is a good question. It depends on why the services are suspended. So I would recommend that the family go back to the agency. And again, the, the answer depends, it depends on why it's, why it's suspended. Like, so in certain circumstances, an agency has to suspend services. So for example, if somebody went to jail or they moved to a nursing home or things like that, they, they, the agency has to suspend the services. In those circumstances, you could not access the service. But if the person was living at home with you as a family member and they have a package of services, it seems reasonable that the, the services could be unsuspended and that the funds would be available. But again, I, it's hard to know exactly what the circumstances are and the reasons. So I would go back to the agency.
Under option two, what is an example of family needs that exceed $2,000?
So we're, we're just not sure what might be happening in a, in a, in a family situation. There could be, like, a, as always, there's an option for requesting additional services when needs increase. So I would envision that there are situations in which this whole stay, stay-at-home requirement is causing extraordinary stress for individuals that might indicate the need for additional services or supports. And so those are some of the types of situations I would envision. But essentially, you'll, you know, a significant increase in need from the way things were before.
Someone writes, are these funds only available if the caregiver has had to stop work to care for their family member? Or are they also for folks who have continued to work and have been using natural supports in the home to care for their family member?
Yes, it, it, it does not have to do with the family's employment status. So regardless of someone in the family is providing additional support there because of the unavailability of other services. So it doesn't matter if the person's employed or not.
If a family still has a budget currently but runs out of respite in mid-June, could they then still apply for the $2,000 payment if they didn't receive a payment for option one?
Can you read that one again?
Yeah, it's confusing. I'll try. If a family still has a budget currently but runs out of respite in mid-June, could they then still apply for the $2,000 payment if they didn't receive a payment for option one?
That's a good question. Let me say, we'll have to get back to you on that one. I'll have to think about that. Yeah, Selena?
Hi, maybe I understood the question differently. We, we had been advising under option one to convert available funds, but that some funds might not be available because of current or planned use. So you're trying not to use up all of that respite if there's something in June that you might still need it for. So in that case, you could see someone having some funds remaining that aren't used up, but they're not available for conversion. And so in that case, if you, if you have a legitimate need to hold those funds aside and not convert them, then the agency can consult with you about then accessing the $2,000 stipend.
Okay. Somebody has another tax-related question. I don't know if you can answer this. Do you know if ARIS will deduct taxes from the $5,000 or would the parent be responsible for figuring out the taxes?
Kirsten, Kirsten, there's been a request. Could you repeat the question a second time?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Sorry, I didn't see that. So the question is, do you know if ARIS will deduct taxes from the $5,000 or would the parent be responsible?
So we are considering these payments to be tax-free difficulty-of-care payments. And so that ARIS will not be deducting taxes and the family would not be responsible for paying the federal taxes on these payments.
Regarding option three, is this payment for families or just an increase in budget to hire workers? I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not clear what she said. So to repeat that, option three, is this payment for families or just an increase in budget to hire workers?
Right, so in option three, it's just an increase in budget or the availability for new people to access family managed respite in order to hire workers. It's not a payment to families.
And I think that you've gone over this, Claire, but someone wants to ask, how do I find out how much money I have left in our accounts? How do I find out how much money I have left in our accounts?
Right. So when families manage their budgets, every two weeks after the payroll period, ARIS sends notice to the family regarding what remains in their budget. So you should check those notices that you receive from ARIS. But you can also check with your provider agency because they also receive those same notices and should have that information. Also, ARIS is able to tell families what they have left in their budget.
Great. Would we use the ARIS COVID payment request form that's on the Vermont Department of Health website? So the form on the Vermont Department of Health website. Do we use that form?
Selena? Do you know?
Hey, um, it will be the same or similar, but you should not use it. We're still finalizing the plan with ARIS.
Okay. Vermont used the federal March 13th emergency order as the measure of the beginning of the emergency. Since states are apparently making their own decisions about when and to what extent to relax the stay-at-home orders, what will actually signify the end of the emergency for purposes of the funding exemptions being discussed today in Vermont? So what is the end of this emergency period where these special options are available?
So it will be the Vermont state of emergency or when the Vermont state of emergency ends, or June 30th, whichever comes first.
Sorry, Claire, I just want to clarify. The national state of emergency relates to the federal waivers that we have. So we had, we might have to put this one in writing to make sure that we're really clear about the different states of emergency and, and how that relates to our authority to make the payments.
Great. Can this information be shared with physicians or educators to help get the word out? Is that part of your communication strategy to let physicians and educators know about these options?
So Dale does not have access to those distribution lists, but we do have partners in our sister agencies at Vermont Department of Health and at the Department of Education. And we can share the information about the availability of these with our partner departments and ask them to send out information that way.
My son requires full-time care. I'm able to use one caregiver, but I'm down two. And I still receive the benefit of a stipend since I am covering 50% of the care along with the other caregiver.
Yes, so families can continue to pay workers that they do have. And then what would be available to convert would be the, what's left over after you pay your own workers. So one of the things you'll want to be careful about is how much, you know, you intend to spend on hiring your workers. So the agency can help you figure that out. But yes, you would, you would only be converting what was left over after you paid your workers.
My daughter requires full-time care. I'm currently covering days while my husband covers nights. Are we both eligible for a stipend?
No, it, yeah, it's, it's per, it's per child. And if there were more than one child in the home who, who has a home and community-based services plan, it would be per child.
What is the maximum that a family could receive?
$5,000, except for, again, if, if there's extraordinary additional new needs beyond what's being offered here, you can go to your agency to discuss whether there's additional funding that could be made available. But regarding these options, we're, we're saying $5,000 would be the cap.
Somebody is wondering if ARIS has any flexibility about its two-week payment schedule. So have you asked them, asked ARIS if they cannot make families wait the two weeks so that they could get their money faster?
So I, I can't speak for ARIS, but I don't believe they'll be able to do that. They, they're, they have a set schedule where they do payroll and process invoices. So I, I'm going to say probably not.
When will providers receive the option two funding to be able to provide that to families?
Selena?
Do you see me leaning forward?
Yeah.
So we, we have a target of end of this week. There's some internal coding that we had to do to be able to disperse the funds, but our target is end of week or early next week.
For option number four, the flexible family funding option, if a family's household income is adversely affected by the current crisis, can that family use their current financial circumstances to qualify? This would be the case where somebody previously didn't qualify.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm I have family managed respite. I hire people myself and submit their time sheets to ARIS. My ARIS statement states NCSS as the agency and Vermont FMR VT Medicaid as the payer. NCSS says they are not a waiver agency and therefore I cannot access these funds through this COVID relief. Is that correct?
Yes, it is actually correct. So what happened several years ago was a couple of areas of the state, which are Addison County and Northwest, basically Grand Isle, Franklin and Grand Isle counties, became what was called integrating family services regions. And that was where they combined developmental services and mental health services for children and families into one program. And in those two areas of the state, children under age 18 do not have children under age 18 do not have DD, Home and Community-Based Services packages. They have other types of service. So they do not have access to the options one or two in this scenario.
I'll just add on this one, Kirsten, there's a little bit of a to-be-determined. We've had some initial discussion about options that might be available in those regions. We just don't have a plan that we can share. We don't have a determination. But it is under discussion because we recognize the difference for those two regions.
Thank you. Just a shout out. Thank Claire McFadden for her terrific clarity of thought and presentation, as well as speaking in a manner that comes across the ether so effectively.
Thank you.
Be good about reading these twice now. A question for option one. Can families request a portion from April 1 until May 15 and then reassess if additional funds were needed because they chose to keep their child home longer and we're not going to have people providing support? I'm going to read that again. For option one, can families request a portion from April 1 until May 15 and then reassess if additional funds were needed because they chose to keep their child home longer and we're not going to have people providing support?
I guess that's, I mean, it's somewhat dependent on when the state of emergency ends. So if the state of emergency ends on the 15th, which it's of May, which it's currently declared until right now in Vermont, but it could be extended. We don't know that yet. I think we need to give this one a little more thought.
Right. Sorry, I'm having a little technology problem here. So. If a person under 18 has a budget for PCA hours, can they get the family-managed respite new funds? And is there anything, any program like this for PCA funds? I.e., you can get the money that you would be paying a PCA?
I think I understand the question. So there are some families that get Children's Personal Care Services and family-managed respite. And we do realize there's a difference in the way we've set up the arrangements. So in Children's Personal Care, the Vermont Department of Health has allowed for a payment to be made to families every two weeks based on the authorized plan. And again, that payment's still considered a stipend to those families. But in Vermont, in the DD program, in family-managed respite, we set it up so that families could get an increase in their budget to hire additional workers. But we did not offer the opportunity for that money to be converted into a payment to the family. So each program is set up a little bit differently. I answered the question totally, but.
This is a sort of long question, so I'll just try to read it slowly. Not sure I understand why there's a distinction between not being able or willing to bring anyone into the home during this health crisis under options one and two versus option three. Options one and two payment can go to families versus Children's Personal Care, where additions to the budget that can't be used unless families want to risk their health. Are the departments at the Agency of Human Services not talking to each other? They try.
Hi, can I jump in on this one? So as I said at the start, I think we were trying to do good, but we didn't do perfect. And so this is one that came to our attention a little bit later in terms of the differences in the use of the family-managed respite. But we haven't yet had the capacity to really have a dedicated conversation to that and whether or not we should do something differently. So I think our team needs to get together and look at that and just understand it a little better. I'm not committing to making a change, but I'm acknowledging that we didn't have a lot of time to really realize the difference until kind of last minute. And so it makes sense to me as well that we would try to align it as much as possible. I'm just not sure if it is possible. So we'll have to come back on that.
Do checks need to be cut before the end of June or just have the paperwork in process before the end of June? So do the check actually have to be cut by the end of June?
So it's going to be different depending on which source it's coming from. So for option one, essentially, the way it works in Home and Community-Based Services is there's a deadline at the end of the fiscal year by which all both time sheets or invoices have to be submitted. And it's usually like, it's like a week after June 30th. So if, and I know that families receive a letter telling them what the deadline is at the end of the fiscal year. So you'll have to get your request in prior to the date that the letter says you have to get it in by. And then they will be able to process those payments. And that's for option one, and that's where ARIS is cutting the check. So in option two, essentially, we're giving the money to the provider agencies to cut the checks. And we don't have a hard and fast deadline on that because they will have the funds available. So we'll have to think about, you know, we do need to close out the year. And so we probably will need to come up with a deadline for that, but we don't have that set up yet. We'll put that in the Q and A document after we have a conversation with the providers. The family-managed respite payments for workers goes along with the same deadline at the end of the fiscal year. And the one-time money can be after the fiscal year.
Is the budget to fund these stipends solid? Or is there a chance that it might be depleted to meet other expenses that have been planned or maybe emergency unplanned expenses? Is the funding solidly in place, Claire?
So the money that comes from option one is available through people's existing budgets. Under option two, we believe we have estimated a proper amount to make sure that everybody who qualifies would be able to access that. But we're not 100% sure of that. Selena, is there any additional thought on that that you have? Nope, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
The question was, was the money that we're giving to agencies to provide $2,000, is that solid and is it going to be enough to make sure that people get it?
Yeah, so we've given the instruction that we have a calculation for how the amount was going to be sent out initially. And then if the amount wasn't sufficient, the agencies could make a second request to us in order to make the payments available to anyone who could qualify. Is that the question?
Yeah.
I'm doing my best to try to take these in order. They're flying in quickly. But if a family still has money in their budget but doesn't want to convert it as they think they will use it by June 30th, can they access option two immediately?
If they really believe that they're going to be able to utilize that funding, yes. If they have a purpose and it's reasonable that they're going to be able to use up their current funds, then yes.
What forms need to be submitted to apply for option one? And do they need to be submitted directly to ARIS or to the designated agency?
So the first point of contact will be the provider agency. And then there's a form that we're still finalizing that will get submitted to ARIS. So go to your agency first.
Is ARIS still open and can you get the $5,000? From number one, and then restart your child with respite before the new fiscal year on July 1st? I'm not sure what ARIS being open would mean, but.
Yes.
I'll read it again. Is ARIS still open and can you get the $5,000? Period. From number one, and then restart your child with respite before the new fiscal year, July 1?
So I think I understand the question. Yes, ARIS is still operating. They have figured out a way to continue in the crisis. So I'm not, so I guess if, so the person, depending on how much money they have left over in their budget, they would be able to access up to the $5,000. And if there was additional money left over beyond that, and then they were able to hire workers, they could still do that. I think that was the question, but I'm not 100% sure.
All right. Do families or unpaid caregivers have to have a discussion with their service coordinator? Or can they just submit the non-payroll form without any assessment or conversation with the service coordinator?
No, they need to make their first stop at the agency because the agency provides information to ARIS about available funds.
I see that someone is, editorial comments, I'm not responding to at this time, so I'm sorry about that. And I have gotten to the bottom of the list. I know it's very hard to keep the scroll organized here. Any more questions people would like to type in there?
Kirsten, I was going to offer, it's 3:25 and we were going to go to 3:30. So it's actually fairly good timing if we just want to repeat our next steps after this webinar. Unless there's a last urgent question. But what Claire went through in the Q and A is really our plan. So we've recorded this town hall and it will be available through VFN and through the Dale website. We have the Q and A that we've already done as the foundation. And then we have the additional questions that were asked today, as well as any that are coming up after this town hall that we'll put all together in one place and then share that out far and wide. We'll use you and Vermont Family Network and others to make sure that people on this town hall know where to find that information. But those are really our next steps and plans. And I just really appreciate folks asked really good questions. And it was really great to have so many folks participating today. There's obviously a lot of interest. And so I hope that we were able to meet some of the needs that folks were having, needing to have met today.
And I just want to thank everybody for their thoughtfulness. And certainly, I know the state is very committed to continuing to get good information out, so stay tuned.